Why don't you tell us in a big picture here what it is you're trying to do? And what you're seeking from us? Because right now, as I read some of it, there's no issue for this board.
So I'll give you a little background and then we can get into issues.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Alex Amering, a principal of hostage engineering offices at 217 Mike Gaff, representing Milton Estates LLC, who, as you mentioned, is under contract for the purchase of these three separate parcels. The subdivision listed under the application is obviously a lot combination to combine the three parcels. They total approximately eight and a half acres. The property itself is bounded by New York State Route 104 South. The former railroad to the north, which is now owned by RG&E. Obviously, the Ho-Jak Trail operates under agreement with RG&E. There is a 32-foot flag parcel that goes out to Phillips Road. And there's also what I believe is a substation at the intersection to the north or southeast there. A little history on the project, obviously, there was a number of due diligence items that came up kind of right at the onset. There are some poor drainage conditions, I'll call, which have essentially been created by water from 104 being kind of trapped by the railroad. It's a rather common issue with railroads. So we did engage a wetland specialist. He put together a report, which we included for your records. His findings outlined the areas that were flooded and his recommendation that they are now jurisdictional isolated wetlands, essentially saying they're not part of an overall network. It was essentially created by man, the railroad itself. So that was one item we did right at the beginning of the project. The one item area that we will have to avoid is there's a drainage channel that takes runoff from the highway. It is under a 40-foot easement to New York State DOT, so we'll have to coordinate with them. It aligns with a culvert that goes under the railroad. It's a two-and-a-half-by-five-foot arch culvert. So we'll essentially be extending the culvert through our property and the driveway will cross over it. The second major due diligence item was obviously access. I think at the time, the flag parcel was created to Phillips. It was, you know, anticipated that 32 feet would be enough. Current Monroe County DOT standards say you need much wider than a 32-foot flag parcel. You essentially need 10 feet on either side of the driveway. And then the second thing is there's also the right on-ramp to 104 westbound, which creates a bit of a traffic concern for people coming out of that access point. So that's where we really, we engaged RG&E regarding an easement across their property, which would give us access to Donovan Street. They had informally approved that, but the utility provider also asked to go to the Public Service Commission, who has a 90-day waiting period. We're currently in that 90-day waiting period, but don't anticipate any issues with that. As part of that agreement with RG&E also, we did include utility access. We decided to connect water and sewer through that easement versus going all the way out to Phillips, although we could connect to Phillips if we had to. There is also, which I believe town staff had pointed out, there is an easement that goes all the way out to 250. I believe it was leftover from something to do with the operation of the railroad itself back in the day. Obviously, there was more concerns when these were three separate parcels about landlocking one of them. And so that easement extends along the north line here and goes out to 250. I think you can see there's actually some concrete remnants, which kind of extends past, I think it's a daycare facility to the west of us. That run would obviously be much larger and upgrading that to a full road, you know, I think would be a bit of a financial issue for this project. But one opportunity, I'll call it, that kind of arose with connecting to Donovan is you'll see the village right away actually has a stub between two kind of triangular parcels. And if you go out there, you'll see where people, you know, have walked across the grass to get on the Ho-Jak Trail. So as part of this, we would be proposing to extend a sidewalk from Donovan Street up to the Ho-Jak Trail. It would, you know, make a more pedestrian-friendly way for people traveling along that corridor to get on the trail. Kind of moving on to the the programming of the site itself. It's a flex business park. As such, we don't have any tenants currently with us today. We are located in the general industrial district, which is fairly flexible within its own means as far as uses. But I think you'll find the business model itself kind of caters itself to certain potential lease tenants for the project that's desirable for Mr. Nolan and his project. We currently have nine buildings. You'll see, while they're all the same footprint, they do have two different architectural styles. We did place the buildings in a somewhat planned manner. You'll see they're not all in a consistent wall. They're set back at different intervals. And if you looked at the grading also, the finished floors somewhat tier off to the natural low point, which is where the culvert and the wetland is in the middle. The buildings are set up in a way, you know, that you could occupy either a quarter of the building or you could occupy the whole building. You know, businesses grow well under lease. You know, they could potentially extend their lease and take up more of the building. There is an overhead door, but, you know, none of the uses themselves would, you know, require tractor trailers or loading docks. It would be hand truck deliveries. It'd be UPS, FedEx, that style. The buildings, again, themselves kind of lay themselves out to the option for some open floor space or to put in offices. We've spent a deal of time looking at both parking and and providing utilities. Obviously, you know, you have to kind of look at the worst-case scenario. As part of the parking, you know, we looked at a bunch of the town uses that would be allowed in the district. And right now, we're providing roughly one space per 200 square feet. If there were uses, you know, that were less, needed less parking, you know, we would welcome the opportunity to bank some of the parking, you know, so the owner in the future could build it, but it would remain as green space, you know, temporarily. We obviously submitted a landscape and lighting plan. The lighting is dark sky compliant LED fixtures, you know, fairly modern. It's a Latonia D-series. The photometrics are on there. Landscape itself, you know, we are proposing to keep a reasonable buffer around the perimeter of the property, including along 104 and, you know, wherever possible, just so we can provide drainage at the rear of the buildings. You'll see there's really no need for any access at the rear of the buildings. There's 5x5 paths, which meet near, say, building code for ingress-to-be ingress. We have put together a stormwater pollution prevention plan, obviously, meeting with the intent of the New York State DEC Speedies permit. It's a combination of wet ponds, dry basins, and bio retention areas. For the most part, they're all around the perimeter. You know, the roof is a moderately pitched roof that wherever possible, we're discharging to splash blocks, which will then go over land flow into the ponds. We did also put together a foundation planning plan, you know, that benefits more the aesthetic of the building itself, again, driving a certain, you know, target tenant. We have included dumpster enclosures. There's one provided for every two buildings. They are sited kind of central to the buildings and the parking areas, so a front unloader, you know, can pull up, unload, and then back out. We have also included street trees and some random clusters kind of along the Ho-Jak Trail to, again, provide a visual buffer there.
As we're going through this, let me, let me step on you here and then stop this. What is it we're asking us for? What kind of tenants are going to be in the G1? Because that's already zoned. And zoned is G1. Are they going to be the same type of tenants? Are they going to be noxious? Are they going to be intrusive? Are they going to be hazardous material? Or other things? There's a whole series of things that they cannot be in those things. Tell me, have you rented any of these spaces or do you? Help me out here.
I'll let Mike talk a little. This business model is new and it's something I think you'll see more of.
Yeah, I'm Mike Nolan. I represent Nolan Estates. So my real estate firm actually be occupying one of the spaces. As you probably know, since COVID hit and everything like that, a lot of smaller businesses are looking for more open office spaces. So we're looking at that as well as, like, general service businesses, anything, but of course, they would have to keep all of their equipment and whatnot inside. Small tech firms would be interested in something like this, as well as e-commerce, retail stuff. So a lot of stuff, obviously, you know, retail is done online. They need some places to bring their supplies in, to sell. Stuff like that is what we're going to be leasing to. So it won't be, you know, obviously, you won't have like bars or whatever. It would be, whatever would be included in that G1 approval. You know, it wouldn't be anything outside of that.
Okay. As I look at this, I'm seeing nine different buildings. We call it flexible space. Tell me what that means and have you rented this out? Do you have anybody who's willing to?
Yeah, we, we have, speaking with many other brokers that I deal with, there'll be no issue. You see these spaces, like I said, my firm will be leasing, will be occupying one of the spaces. But as we build them, we don't see any issue in leasing them out to a variety of, again, the great part about this is that not only the building type, but also the zoning application, you have a wide variety of tenant where in a typical building, you only can lease to a specific kind of office building. You only lease to specifically what this building is doing. You lease to just specific office-type businesses. Whereas these types of buildings, which are popping up all over the place, are great as long as the zoning can apply to them or you can have a wide-ranging tenant base.
Help me, help me understand here what it is you're trying to do? Because it's already zoned G1. Is there, is there seeking out new zoning here or preliminary plan approval? Or what are we trying to do?
We're applying for subdivision, which would combine the three lots and site plan approval to construct the buildings. At the time, you know, a tenant came in, they would have to come in and get a whole building permit.
When you say combine three lots, does that mean three buildings to me?
No, this, this is currently broken up into three lots. They need to combine the lots. They're not subdivided. They need, they need to combine the lots.
I get that part. I was, I just, okay. What I'm trying to get is a complete, so you're trying to take three pieces of property that are completely adjacent to one another. Combine them all into one owned piece of property?
That's correct.
And then you would maintain G1?
We're not proposing any zoning changes.
And even if they did, no matter what goes in there, as they're going in there, they need to come and pull a permit with us anyway.
They'd have to be before this board or before this zone?
If it's not in allowed use, if it's in allowed use, then they're allowed to go there. If it's not in allowed use, they have to come back here for a special use permit, no matter what.
So it's, you know, it's very similar to any strip plaza. You know, when a lease ends and someone new comes in, maybe it needs a special use permit, then they would have to come back to the board. You know, maybe it needs a grease separator and they would have to work with DPW. They want a new sign, they have to come into the board. You know, we're kind of laying the groundwork and the infrastructure, you know, to facilitate these leases. You know, it's not saying that there aren't going to be additional catches, you know, when a contract is signed, you know, won't have to come back to the board for anything that, you know, got signage, utility, all that.
Is there, is there sanitary or industrial sewer systems already existing on that property? Or is that something we're going to have to put in?
No, we already looked at that. Jake and I looked at that today. There's already 10-inch on Donovan Street.
So no capacity issues with?
Not as of right now. We talked about, you know, if there was a possibility, and we just threw it out there as, as a what-if. If a microbe, you know, goes in there, you know, they produce a lot of different things there, so that could increase the capacity. But as of right now, that's not even on the table. So as of right now, there's no, no issues for capacity.
Assuming it was domestic, which would be, you know, technical bathrooms, a break room, you know, that could all go straight to the village sewer system. If it was anything with floor drains and had potential for oil, we would do an oil separator. If it was something where food production, it would be a grease separator. You know, so it will have to be looked at on a case-by-case basis.
Yes, absolutely. And there was, and I don't remember exactly where, but there was a larger pipe as well located somewhat near there if they needed it. I almost think Jake said 18-inch. If you're on, don't quote me on that. It was, it was a lot larger than the 10-inch that's pretty much rated in front of this property. And I did go over some notes with them as well of some stuff Jake and I noted down today on that same, same sheet.
You know, similarly, they'll have to put in, you know, when they look at occupancies and fire code and all that, they're, you know, going to have to look at, you know, the tenants and, you know, base it off of certain assumptions and.
The, one of the documents that I saw was that the buildings are approximately 6,000 square feet and that up to 25% of the building will have different businesses, different companies or, or whatever. Help me understand that.
So the way the architect designed it is there's essentially four pre-designed partitions. You'll see here so that, you know, the most occupants could be in one building are four. They would have one man door. They would have one overhead door, you know. But what that means is, you know, the partition doesn't have to be there. So it could be in increments of, you know, a quarter building essentially, if they wanted more space.
If they wanted the whole building, they could have the whole building.
That's, they could have multiple, but yeah.
Other questions from members on the board?
So you're creating a generic building, subdivided into the four units per building. You're outbuilding with the mizing walls between spaces or no? Are you, are you finishing these buildings inside? Are you leaving them open for tenancy and then finish? Finish per tenant requirement?
Yeah, they would, they would essentially put the shell and all the guts in, so to speak, but it wouldn't be finished.
Right. Roughen the bathrooms and have them ready as well. Depending on?
Depending on the tenant's needs?
The tenant's needs, we build out to their needs. So if they have two spaces, then we build it to their, their needs for two spaces. If they have one space, they want it subdivided out and put three offices in there, we do that. They want it open. Like, our space is going to be mainly open with just a bathroom. So it'd be more of just an open-air office space.
Right. Because I'm looking, I see you playing, your plan is very generic, but I mean, you have a, you have one bathroom.
Exactly.
Right. Depending on the need to the tenant, you may need a men's room and a ladies' room, which means you've got to put a lot more in the underslam plumbing in. You're cutting up floors if you're having floors to begin with.
Right. We're, so that would be on leasing to pay for those expenses above and beyond it. That would be case-by-case situation. You know, we're providing what we're providing. Anything above that would be on none to be, that would be, again, it'd be case-by-case. All this is case-by-case basis, so. And that would all have to come through here, you know what I mean? So.
I'm going to tell you right up front, you're going to have issues here with signage down the road.
Yeah.
Because it's, that's always a big beat.
We're aware of that. We're aware of that.
We spent a decent amount of time today talking about that. And I think the good news is, is you're not going to find a lot of, you know, this, it's not a convenience store, doesn't get passed by traffic. You know, for the most part, you know, today's generation, you know, you're going to Google it and you're going to drive there or it's going to be employees. It's, you know, the business model isn't something that, you know, really pulls people off the street, so to speak.
This site, as it's laid out to me, seems like really tight and compact. Has anyone done a fire truck analysis on the roading? Because you've got dead ends. Basically, can a fire truck move through this facility?
We could, yeah. But town staff can figure out the exact.
I already had the fire marshal. He was, he's part of, you know, plan review. He did review it and he had some recommendations that I will go over with them before, you know, final is done. But for the most part, they just needed to, I think, widen a few spots and that was, that was it.
We do tend to be conservative when it comes to parking. There's a lot of times when you take the radius of the adjustment for a fire truck, you might lose a couple here and there, so.
The amount of space parking we had, from what we figured, it wasn't enough. So whatever justice needed to be made for fire truck access was able to be made. Yeah, it's a big one for me too.
Okay. The other thing, trash trucks need a lot of room to maneuver to pick up dumpsters. So obviously, that needs to be looked at. And the other big thing that no one ever thinks about, but you live in western New York, snow removal. And where, where are you going to put all that snow? You don't have a lot of excess space to push all that snow around.
Or, or maybe we should tell you where you're not going to put it. Where would you not like it? Many of the locations within the village and the town of Webster itself.
Try and chalk it out. Yeah, you will see on a number of especially these side parking areas. One side has a curb and one doesn't. And that was done somewhat strategically. And the side without a curb is also where we have some bio retention areas, so. Yeah. Even, even when it's not rain and it's snow, it still is good for stormwater to get into the bio areas, so. Do you have any of these parks anywhere else or is this the first?
This is the first for us. I know a couple other investors in Florida that have the same type, almost the exact same type of buildings. They're older buildings and they converted into the same style. They're actually really popular now in the last probably five or 10 years in other parts of the country, especially, you know, areas that are growing quickly. You know, Florida, North Carolina, Utah, stuff like that, California. They're really popular mainly because of their utility. And also even more so now than ever for small businesses that are looking for office space, they want more open airspace. And they don't really need, you know, they, instead of going and leasing a small, you know, 500, 600-foot office spaces cramped, drop ceilings, they can rent something like this for a reasonable price and have it wide open and they have, you know, tons of light coming in and they can have it however they would really like it to be affordably. So that's, that's their goal.
I think it targets a lot of people who financially couldn't do a new build on their own. You know, startups, that type of thing, or a company who's looking, you know, maybe downstate and they want to put a satellite office, but they don't want to commit to a new building. You know, this is less of a commitment, so.
Let me ask a question and this would be for our, our municipal board authority, the members who are at least here. Have you guys been weighing in on this at all? We're talking about combining three different pieces of property here and we're talking about a G1 zoning that they really can't move away from. Has this been in front of you? What have you thought of this? Any comments? I'm going to look at that if you want to.
I haven't reviewed anything similar to this.
You haven't seen anything on this?
It has not been in front of the village board, if that's your question.
That was the question.
It has yet, it has not been before the village board.
They do all have copies for them to look at though of this, so each board member does have a copy to review.
So is the, the intention is not to develop this in phases? Are you going to build all nine buildings?
The intention would be to build in three phases.
So where's phase one, phase two, and phase three? Is that in these plans somewhere?
It is not. But we've had.
Be happier with that. You need to do that because your first approval will probably only be for phase one. Because then if you approve the whole thing and you don't have meaningful construction within a certain period of time, the approval is expired. So if you want to do it in phases, you have to present it that way. Or presented as one-phase approval to bring the properties together as one. And then you've already got zoning issues on what can be built in those properties.
Well, technically, because they're combining parcels, it's not a subdivision. If you read the definition of a subdivision in our code, that's taking a big parcel and chopping it up into little pieces, not the other way around. So technically, you don't need any approval from the village of Webster to combine those parcels. All you got to do is record a deed in the Monroe County Clerk's office and they're combined.
But you need, I think we do need a chairman's signature still, right?
You do, yes.
It can be done administratively, but obviously, being here presenting the project as a whole, I think that was kind of, you know, we weren't, we weren't saving any time or steps really if the, you know, if the site plan doesn't have the subdivision.
Do you think that these, questions please? That these buildings might be occupied by the automotive repair jobs and all that?
No, that's a good question. We will not be leasing that type of automotive repair.
What's the purpose for the garage stores?
Um, it's for, a lot of the space, too, is going to be presumably leased to, like e-commerce, like I mentioned. So they have a lot of trucks coming in and out, loading in and out, and stuff like that. I mean, and it is a popular design, too, now. If you see some of the buildings downtown that they're building, they do have these like glass shaded overhead doors just to allow sun and fresh air in. Especially with COVID and everything going on. They want to have as much air flow through these places in the village to do that, even in Uptown, they are, and we don't always have air going in, but.
So this is going to be more like a E-type park, E, you know, mostly office space, high tech.
Tech, yeah. Yes, I do see some possible like general service businesses as well. But I would presume more towards that, yes.
Because a few gaps of automotive repair shops are there. Then you've got a pile of junkers in front of them.
Yeah, no, that's...
I wouldn't think you were going to go down that path.
No, absolutely not.
I think there's no advantage to the person leasing these and trapping people and, you know, that's not a good look for billing space.
Alex, have you talked to the state or the county about that right out? And the proximity to the ramp on?
We have not proposed, we have not shown them the current design. We showed them a full access and they didn't like that. You know, quite honestly, I don't believe a secondary access is required, but it would benefit emergency vehicles. You know, it would help, the majority of the people, I think, will be going to 104. So exiting out helps distribute traffic, so.
Right, I just didn't know if the state DOT was going to have an issue with being right there.
You know, the, I think the application is before Monroe County for referrals. So I would anticipate some feedback one way or another.
Yeah, I have turned stuff over to Monroe County for their review. Obviously, they have 30 days to do that from their receipt, which was, I believe, yesterday. And they're also aware that long form does have to be done as well. And they're taking care of that as well. I notified them yesterday, the day before.
So then on these plans, it appears you've got Donovan Street going all the way down to Phillips Road, but it really doesn't. Plus, you call it Donovan Park, it's really Donovan Street.
There is no park there, that is correct.
Donovan Street actually curves. I think the curves up to Orchard Street. The whole right of way still exists.
It is, but it's not there.
It ends and interns right there.
It ends and turns, but there's some traffic. Can't go out Donovan Street to Phillips Road.
Yeah, we, we had the benefit of sitting down with Aaron and Jake at the beginning. And Jake was very helpful on the whole history on how Donovan, you know, ended up going up, up to the north street, so.
And that, the other road that you were talking about that's there is, I believe it is a railroad junction. I think it's an official road, but it's not.
I noticed the...
There's probably the continuation of Railroad Street.
Yeah.
Across... The ground is sort of listed as railroad.
It does show it as a street on the map, but...
It's not an official road. It is not an official road.
So it's not. At some point way back when, it might have been.
Right, right. It still shows up on the map.
So, and you realize that depending, depending on the use of the building, there's different parking requirements for the village.
Yep.
You know, so if you decide one's going to be a micro brewery or something like that, that's got different parking requirements than, you know, warehousing or general offices or retail, you know, so.
And parking would be a filler issue.
A brewery.
And there's a office, I'm sorry.
So if I understand this correct coming in at us, we're talking about combining three properties to create one 8.5, 9 acre acres? For a flexible business park? And it's all going to be under one, but that's, that's it. We're not changing anything that occurs there? All the things that, that occur within G1 remain?
Yep.
That's the way it's done. No one's proposing to change it, is there?
And we have a listing of some of the things that are actually there. Any use of the building or land which creates any dangers, injures, noxious or other objection to fire? Explosion, radioactive or other hazard? Noise, vibrations, smoke, toast, dust, other odor? Or other form of air pollution, heat, cold, dampness? Movement of air, electrical or other disturbance? Clear liquids? Or so on and so forth? The, this obviously, you guys put this down, I believe.
Yeah, it's a different style zoning description. Instead of saying what it can be, it says what it can't be.
Right, so it allows all uses except residential? Or trailer carts, or junkyards, automobile graveyard, and disassembly? And those noxious uses, which I'm sure they're not going to try to market to somebody that wants to, you know, have fire, explosives, and radioactive and all that kind of stuff. So, but that allows them to have commercial uses? Office uses? You know, it doesn't have to be just general industrial. You can think of industrial like the Xerox nearby. It can be what's allowed in neighborhood business except for the residential parts of that. So that's why they can, you know, so that's what makes the parking kind of funny because of the way the village has the parking. It's not, it's not by zoning district. You have to comply with service by use, you know? So depending on what your first uses are, remain limited. How much parking is left over for the later uses? You know, when they're coming in in phases?
Yep.
Yeah, we would expect there would be some conditions to that effect that, you know, we can look at those things as the phases are kind of built out. To the same effect, we don't want a lot more parking than, you know, parking that's just never going to be used. That's got named.
And just so you know, the village is probably within the next six, hopefully six, no more than eight weeks, is going to have a new site plan review local law and get rid of this controlled site thing, which doesn't apply here for this board. But one of the provisions of that is, is that for every, before a C O O is issued for one of these kind of places, you've got to come back to this board with a site plan just for that building.
Yep.
You know, so that they know actually what's going to be in there and how you're taking care of the parking and all that kind of stuff.
That's consistent, I think, with a lot of shopping centers. We don't have an issue with it.
Yeah, same kind of thing.
What I'd like to do at this point is see if there are any comments from the public or see if our village board has any other more comments on this? Any thought processes as we move forward? Because the new, the new laws are going to come to you guys for approval. They're not on the books yet right now. Everything on 175 is still existing within the book. We've had parts of it already.
Yeah.
All right, any thoughts or comments from folks who have joined us from the general audience?
Peter Ralder, 59 Dunning Avenue. So a couple of things. First is, it sounds like the real crux of this issue tonight is just to do a re-subdivision. This is kind of what they would do in the town. So in effect, I think that, it just seems to me that this is a concept...
A combination of...
Yes, you're basically re-subdividing the parcel from three to one. And then, and then, so you're kind of more in a concept phase. But, so that's kind of how I wanted to address it at this point, is it was a concept? And actually, this is kind of what the comprehensive plan talks about for the general industrial, the GI zone. And so it's actually not a bad match for that zone at all. The only thing I would mention, though, is that there is a recreational easement across the Hojek line. So that should be taken into account in terms of how to get across that, that, because we went to great effort to try to get that recreational easement in terms of how that interacts with traffic crossing that easement. It may not be issued, but it's something to consider, so. But as a concept, this is, I think, an excellent match for the general industrial zone. So I encourage you to think about that. But obviously, in the concept phase, then you're going to have to really look at the three parcels coming together in one tonight. You can deal with all the other stuff later when preliminary comes in, really, so. So thank you for allowing us to talk.
Thank you.
Thank you, Theodore.
And just so Peter, you know, and the rest of the public knows, the reason we're asking for a long form environmental assessment form and not the short form one is because we believe this is a type one action. Principled because of the Hojek area.
It looks like a type one action, isn't it?
And that, that the, all three parcels are adjacent to a recreational area that's either operated or maintained by the village. And so that's why we're considering it a type one action. And certainly, you know, the impact on the Hojek Trail is going to be very important.
And who will take the lead on the secret process?
Well, at this point, it's got to be the village board. It depends on how quick this moves along. If we can get the new, if we get the new local law passed, maybe you guys will be doing it, but.
But it hasn't passed yet, so we don't do that.
You're right, but as things stand today, it's going to be the village board that actually grants the site plan approval since they're approving, it's already available to the...
Surveyor and will file it out.
The lead agency and take care of secret.
So do we have the ability or the pathway for the applicants seeking preliminary and final subject plan approval?
I, 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 at this point, this board doesn't have to grant any express approval. I think what the village board would be looking for is your recommendations and, you know, any issues that you may see. But at this point, unless and until the new site plan review gets adopted, and we just handed that out to everybody. So that's one of the reasons I'd like, if you have any comments, if you can get them to me by April 6th. Because what I, I would, my intention is to get it to the village board on April 14th and set a public hearing on it. And then they can adapt it depending on, you know, the input or whatever from the public as soon as the April 28th or April 28th.
Did every member on the board could copy that?
Yeah, I think Joe, I think Joe did.
I don't think they all have it yet, but...
I made copies for tonight, just all paper. It's like an eighteen...
Perfect.
So.
Originally, this was going to be going to the board this coming Thursday, but that was canceled because of the mandatory 30 day for the county, which the clock is ticking for them. So as of right now, this will be put on for the, I think, April 28th meeting for the board. Unless county comes back sooner for the, for the April 14th tour, so.
So what I'm looking for then, or if I've got this right, what we need to do is make a recommendation?
And I think, as Peter said, it's more at this point on the concept level. Overall, what do you think of the proposal? What problems have any of you seen with the proposal? You know, um...
I don't have to make a motion at all.
Things at this point that the village board, you know, should focus on when they consider the plan?
You look like you were going to make another comment.
No, I think we were at a point where we were kind of summarizing some of the things the board was looking for. And one of them was a basing plan. Obviously, there were some staff comments, which I think you would like us to address. Oh, even a full EAF and the county comments were kind of waiting on, so. That consistent, I guess?
No questions or comments? Sir!
I have a question. Your work is over. I have a question in terms of your E-Red Zone exit. You have just one entrance and, or one entrance and two exits. Is that correct? Would you anticipate that all of your, or most of your exits will be towards Phillips? Or?
Two exits, one entrance. Yeah.
The other is very, I want to know.
I, I think it's...
Really fake traffic that would go both east and west within the, within the traffic.
Again, most of the people that will be coming here are going to be, you know, repeat folks, either employees or customers. So, you know, I think naturally they'll tend to go in the direction, whether they're going east or west when they leave. You know, both 250 and Phillips, you know, have, they, they're both more than adequate. You know, from a traffic standpoint, I'm sure they've been studied up one side and down the other. Again, whether they come east or west, I think it's going to be where they're going, you know?
I mean, I just, I look at this and from the building that would be furthest to the east, if you did not want to go out and go to Phillips, then you have to either go to the expressway or go on up to Main Street. If you wanted to go back and go south, you'd have to go back quite a distance along there, two buildings and two more buildings before you can turn right and go back up to Phillips. Is that, how wide is that? I guess that's my question. How wide would that be? Would it easily accommodate another car passing, you know, or traffic passing?
Onto Donovan?
Yeah.
That's a full, that's a full access intersection, so.
No, 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 within your complex.
Oh, just at the park, internally?
Internal, I'm not talking about externally, internally.
Or all, all the drive aisles are designed as to what? I would have to check. It's either 24 or 25 feet.
I have 24.
Is there a particular point I could, within the development you're looking at, or?
I believe, just so you know, at least the fire marshal says, well, I think it works thanks for pointing that rule, yes. Standing dry. Yeah.
So you only can go this way?
Yeah, so just like, stay there. Other shopping center.
Okay, what was determined between the conversation?
All the drive aisles are typical of what, you know, this, this village or any other town would need to expand, which is typically 24 or 25 feet.
Including the flag lot?
Right. And that will be part of the car?
That's one way out to the flag. The rest is all to be right turn only.
Okay.
One just egg lead.
Yes, but how do you...
It doesn't need to be a sign for two-way. It will say do not enter.
You know, you know somebody's coming down Phillips. They're going to cruise down that lane.
People are going to do what they want to do.
People are going to cruise down Hojek.
No, Phillips.
Down there.
Somebody's going to cruise down this lane.
Yeah.
All right. Go ahead.
Two drawing corrections, two buildings noted here have sewer connections shown, but they're actually attached to the water.
Make sure we sewer and...
All right, so what we need then is we need a motion from this group. The applicant seeks preliminary and final subdivision approval on the 8.59 acres. That's combining them all together. That's one that's going to be given to the village board for them to make a decision on.
Correct.
So... Any seconding on that, or? What we're going to do is we're going to give it to the village board. We're going to give them a recommendation. It's the recommendation to approve this combination. Because that's really what they're doing, is they're taking two different properties, bringing them into 8.59 acres. Everyone agree with that? That our recommendation is going to be to approve this?
Yes.
Hold on.
I have a recommendation to the village for the conceptual development of this singular lot. But with the conditions that this has to... I'm looking at this thing, and there is no way fire trucks are getting through this thing. So that has to be resolved.
Yeah, that's a comment that I made just a few minutes ago. There's a lot of chatter up here, so you guys probably didn't hear me, but the park marshal's recommendation is 26 feet.
Right. But, you know, I'm looking at turning radiuses, and, you know, you start putting cars in here, this is chaos. Now, hopefully, we never have to go down that aisle, but when you do, the truck's got to be able to get through. First responders got to get through for whatever, you know. There's always, you know, the unknowns at... So just ease of access. Facility is...
So what we're hearing is the group is making an approval to the village board to bring these lines all together with the conceptual address that fire trucks be addressed as they move around within the area. That's the major concern. And they're G1, we're assuming they're going to take that.
Yeah, and obviously, we don't know what county's going to say. They may come back with some items, too. We don't know.
Agreed. Okay. So we've got that on the table to make a recommendation to the village board? I will do that, but if we get a second on that?
I'll second that.
We find a second? All those in favor? Aye. Aye? Opposed? There you go. Send it to us. It's going to be in an email.
One question, this might be for village legal counsel, but there's a timeframe typically from when the subdivision approval is done to when it has to be filed, correct? I want to say 62 days? 60 days, or... The counties are doing 60? Okay, so, yeah, just being, you know, I don't think we would be combining the properties until... The map would be filed until, you know, we got to a certain point with the site plan approval, so... I think we can work through that.
Oh, we're not going to the site plan?
Right. No, I'm just saying that, again, the two have, on our end, have to kind of track together because of the whole purchase agreement, you know, so...
I think your 62 days are after the chairman signs the plan.
So we can kind of hold off?
Right.
Okay, great. I thought that was the case.
Thank you. Yeah, and even the 62 days for... Whether it's the village board or if we get the new local law, this board gives you actual site plan approval. That doesn't start around until you give us the completed application, which you've got to give us the long form EAF and the phasing plan. And so that 62 days hasn't even started yet.
That's the 30 days for the county?
30 days for the county, right.
Okay, so we'll work with theirs together in that as soon as possible, so...
Fair enough. All right, we have that on our table. We've taken an action on that. Joe, the only comment I've got, when does the village board meet again?
Well, they meet this Thursday, but they won't be reviewing this application. And then it's April 14?
14th and the 28th of April.
It's their next meeting.
April 14th and 20th.
28th.
28th. Excuse me, two weeks out. Got them. And I'll copy everybody in on this board as we do that.
And as we get the county stuff, it'll be, you know, sent out to everybody to see.
Thank you.
Full board, I'll make sure I copy it as well. And any of your comments to the new site plan, the proposed site plan, or you want? You can get an email, directly to me or to Joe, and she'll get them to me, whichever you do.
Everybody get that? If you've got comments on the, I believe it's seven or nine changes long?
Only eight.
Excuse me. He's looking for comments, questions, or thoughts on... Do you need clarification on that? You need to get them to Joe, and she'll get them to Don. You're welcome. That's all.